My name is Bonnie Duffy. I am the Chair for the Planning Commission on the county side. And we are going to start with a roll call vote on the county side. Jeff Barth?
Here.
Adam Morehauser?
Present.
Doug Odie?
Here.
Mike Ralston?
Present.
Becky Randall?
Here.
Ryan Vanderflit? And Bonnie Duffy. Thank you. Eric Nyberg, will you do it on the city side, please?
Yeah, good evening, Sioux Falls Commissioners. We'll go through attendance on our side as well, and I'll hit the five that I believe are on the phone with us. Commissioner Nissis?
Here.
Commissioner Katie Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Kurt Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Paulson?
Here.
Commissioner Kittums?
Here.
And are there any other Commissioners on the line? That is all on the city side, and I'm Eric Nyberg, and I'm here in presence.
Thank you. Commissioners, make sure when you make a motion and second, state who you are. Good evening. I call the order this regular joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone in the meeting room tonight, please make sure that all cell phones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be recorded live and available for viewing by members of the public afterwards on the www.minhahacounty.org site. In observance of the CDC guidelines for social distancing, tonight's meeting is taking place simultaneously within the county commission meeting room and virtually within a Zoom meeting room online. In the Zoom meeting room, each individual user on the line will be on mute to maintain communication clarity for everyone. Every item listed on the agenda will be read separately. If any member of the public wishes to be heard on an item, you may raise your hand while I read the item description. If hands are raised, we will follow our normal hearing procedure by requesting planning staff to present a report on each item, and then request the petitioner to come to the podium and make a statement or answer any questions. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the items shall be recognized by the planning staff in the order hands were raised and state their name and address for the record. The Planning Commissioner will then discuss the matter and take appropriate action. First on the agenda night, on the agenda tonight is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? And please raise your hand if you are attending remotely, and staff will then call on you and unmute your microphone for comment.
No hands are raised.
Thanks, David. Okay, item number one on the agenda is the minutes from the September 28th Joint Planning Commission meeting. Is there any comment or changes to the minutes? I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, Adam Morehauser, I'll make a motion to approve item number one, the minutes of the September 28th meeting.
Jeff Barth, here, I'll make a motion to second that.
Okay, and item number one, approval of the minutes of September 28th, I have a motion and seconded. We have to go through, any other further questions? Roll call vote, Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehauser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
Ryan's not here, and Bonnie Duffy, aye. We approve it on the county side. Eric?
City Commissioners, there, the approval of the minutes has passed on the county side. Do I have a motion and a second on the city side?
Who to approve on the city side, Kurt Johnson?
Second, Katie Johnson.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, city Commissioners? Hearing none, we'll also do a roll call vote. Commissioner Nissis?
Aye.
Commissioner Katie Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kurt Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Paulson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kittums?
Aye.
Minutes have passed, five to zero on the city side.
Thank you. Items number two and three are conditional use permits. Any final action taken on the conditional use permits tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, November 2nd at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, November 24th, 2020, at or after 5:00 PM. The meeting is held in the Carnegie Town Hall at 235 West 10th Street. Next, I'll read the description of item number two. If anyone wishes to comment on it, now would be the time to raise your hand if you have any comments. Item number two, conditional use permit, 20-45, to allow a bed and breakfast establishment on the property legally described as a west 15 feet of Lot 30 and all of Lot 31, Block 2, Sioux Gardens subdivision, Section 22, Township 102 North, Range 49 West. A petitioner is Rick Zener. He's also the property owner. Location is 1300 East Beverly Street. That's about a half a mile north of Sioux Falls. Kevin?
Good evening. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This item, staff is going to briefly present the staff report, as we have received some notice from the neighbors that they are not in favor of the proposed conditional use permit. And then we'll go through the procedure of the petitioner and then anyone who wants to speak from there. So, conditional use permit number 2045 is to allow a bed and breakfast establishment on the property. The petitioner is requesting that a portion of their single-family dwelling becomes a short-term rental, such as that was found on the website Airbnb. Minnehaha County has classified this as a bed and breakfast facility, and that's why we have a conditional use permit to allow it through the county. The petitioner has submitted narrative and sketch plans to the House, and with that in mind, the staff looked, reviewed the conditional use permit criteria, and we'll cover some of those items. The criteria includes the impact of the proposed use in the adjacent property shall be a major consideration. The proposed use should generally be compatible with adjacent properties and other properties in the district. This is a short-term rental, which is generally compatible with the residential sites, as traffic is low and the property owner will still live on the site with the guests. The primary use of the property will remain single-family residence, and the structure will not change. Parking on the street should be discouraged, and the petitioner should make available one dedicated off-street parking space. B, that measures should be taken to ensure that the proposed use does not alter the general character of the neighborhood. As stated before, the area will remain, it'll remain a single-family dwelling, and no outside changes will take place, except for a possibility of a small identification sign. C, that effects of noise, odor, traffic, and air and water pollution and other negative factors shall be eliminated or controlled through the use of screen, setbacks, and orientation. The narrative does explain that parties will not be allowed, and not allowing parties should be a priority. In order to do this, staff is recommending that the, we limit the number of guests to seven, as that's how many guests can fit in the house, in the upper part of the house, and typically how many guests can fit in one vehicle to drive to the house. And this would also limit the amount of party-type of activity that can happen on the house. And D, the proposed use shall not adversely affect the public. Proposed rental should have no adverse effect on the public. Public as property will still remain as a primary use of the residence. Traffic will not significantly increase, and the property is connected to the renter's sanitary sewer district to discharge any additional water usage into the sewer rather than a septic system. Staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit number 2045 with 10 conditions, and with that in mind, I would highlight condition number two, and staff is going to change one of the recommendations on condition number two, that the sign may be posted on the property within a, with a building permit not to exceed two square feet. That was a cross of ordinances. The county at large allows 16 square feet, where the joint jurisdiction area only allows two. So, we would like to recommend the two square feet of a sign, if that's what the petitioner would like. So, with that in mind, is there any questions?
Do you have any pictures of the driveway? I was just wondering, do they got enough room for, to accommodate an extra car in the driveway?
So, they do have this two-stall garage, and I guess they, I believe they do have a little bit of space on the side yard that they can expand the driveway if they would like. I'll note in these pictures here, you can see the narrowness of the road. It was, when I was there, there was a UPS truck that passed me, and it was tight. And there's some of the other neighboring structures. This is looking to the southwest, and then this is looking east, and that would be it.
Kevin, I have a question.
Okay.
Who maintains the road out there, the gravel road?
I believe it's a township.
Any other questions for Kevin? Guess not at this time. Will the petitioners please come forward and state your name and address?
Rick and Tammy Zener, 1300 East Beverly Street, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57104.
I guess I'll ask this question again. From what Kevin just said, you're going to actually live on the property. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It is a rental property? Is that right, too?
I'm sorry.
Is that, is it, is it a rental property? You own the property?
No, ma'am. It's a place of residence.
Okay.
Single-family home, yeah.
Anyone else have any questions for the petitioners?
No hands are raised.
Go ahead, Eric.
Uh, my question is, do you, how much experience do you have with short-term rentals? Is this a new adventure for you, or have you been doing this for a while?
We are entrepreneurial, kind of by spirit, so we, we are acquiring another rental property. It's a fourplex. So, as far as Airbnb, I've done a lot of training on it, done mentoring on it, and, you know, education on it, and I got a coach that's helped me getting it all set up. So, so, answer question, this will be our first one.
Okay. David, were there some hands raised? Is that what you said?
No hands.
No hands raised, okay. Okay, any other questions for them? Guess nothing at this time. Is there anyone else in the, on Zoom that was just to speak to this item? David, any hands raised?
No hands are raised.
Okay. Okay, Commissioners?
This is Becky. Are there no comments from the audience? Was it just the letter we received in our packet?
As near as we know, there's no one else here, and nobody's raising their hands on Zoom.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Jeff, go ahead.
Um, so I've actually talked with our old friend Wayne Steinhauer about this issue, and as you know, he is a hotel owner, whatever we call it. He owns a hotel, and he said that our area actually needs this type of facility for the special events where hotels get overbooked, and people are coming to stay for a couple of weeks. And so, he, I guess, gave me a different perspective on this. It's not necessarily what the neighbors would like, but I've stayed in a couple of these myself, and, you know, I think anybody can have a bad neighbor or a bad tenant, but the hope is that it's run correctly and people use it properly.
Anyone else care to comment on this item?
Yeah, Bonnie, Doug here. Could I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, in the staff analysis of it, I'm just kind of curious, what is the actual definition of short-term rentals? What length of time is that?
Did you hear that?
Is that to us?
He, he's, he's asking what, what you consider a short-term rental.
Okay, that's a good question. I, personally, I would consider a short-term rental to be less, a week or less. It'd be a family passing through the area, going to see, you know, a family trip, and then they'd be in and out maybe within a couple of days. It'd be nothing long-term. I think long-term would be like, maybe have a corporate traveler, where they're traveling for business, and they need maybe a little bit longer stay, but they don't want to get an apartment, but get a hotel would be too, too cold and convenient to them. That'd be my definition, I guess.
What's the county's definition, I guess, is what Doug was asking?
Kevin?
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. The county does not have a definition for short-term rental. Staff used it as that is the common term for Airbnb-type facilities. So, this will be considered, from the county's perspective, as a bed and breakfast, and there isn't really a limitation on the duration of stay, per se, but we can limit, like I said, the amount of people that are allowed in it and that sort of thing.
Doug, did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is Jeff again.
Go ahead.
So, I think, you know, a lot of times, there are things that, with the changing economy, changing world, that need to be taken into account, and it might be that we need to put some additional regulation in on this type of business. That said, I also know that, that people in general don't seem to like regulations, unless their neighbor's putting in something, at which time that they really hope for it. Then, I think that we should keep that in mind and perhaps consider going down the road if, if we need to have some additional rules regarding Airbnbs.
Madam Chair, this is Becky.
Go ahead.
Um, given the narrowness of the thorough streets, I'm wondering if we should have two parking places, so that any guests don't park on the street, like Kevin mentioned that there might be place to the side of the driveway. I think if, if that's just a concern for neighbors, I'm wondering if, if that is a reasonable requirement, like if, if it's two couples or something, and they come in two vehicles. I guess I just throw that out for discussion. I don't know what other folks think.
Would you like to comment on that?
Yes, our, we park in the garage. Our driveway is at least two-car wide, and it's longer, so they can park in front of each other, if off to the side of the driveway, or have two spots right up to the garage. There, you could fit four cars in our driveway. There's plenty of space. They wouldn't be on the road.
Did that answer your question, Becky?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else have any further comment?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff again.
Go ahead.
You know, I see that we, on item nine there, have at least one dedicated off-street parking spot. I asked the proponent if having two dedicated parking spots off the street during, when it's being leased, would be an excessive burden.
Would you like to make a comment on that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? I didn't quite hear that.
I think he's saying, like, number nine, he's indicating that maybe we have at least one. He's, I think Jeff was indicating maybe two.
Right.
Okay.
Instead of having a parking, parking on the street, he would like to have them in a driveway. Is that what he's getting at, instead of parking on the street?
There is adequate room for four vehicles in the driveway, two of them side by side, front to front, front to back.
So, we could, we could switch this, because when we did the original petition for it, or, we had put on there that we have two spots for it, so, definitely.
Does that answer your question, Jeff?
And, and Madam Chair, I guess I would like to suggest that we put that into our resolution, should we decide to approve this.
Okay, in other words, maybe on number nine, put two instead of one?
Yeah, and someone else has to second it, but I would make that motion, I guess.
This is Becky Randall, and I'll second.
Okay.
Change.
Okay, and motion's made and checked, and seconded to approve conditional use permit 20-45, with the change of number nine. Instead of saying one, dedicated off-street parking, to say two.
And number two.
Oh, pardon me. Let me go back here. Number two, oh, yeah, that's right. And number two, that the sign may be posted on the property with a building permit not to exceed two square feet. Is that correct? Okay, those are the two differences in what the recommendations to you are. Okay.
Can I ask any elaborate on that? When it says it may be permitted, does that mean it's optional? We may, we are able to post a sign, or if we do, it's no more than two square feet?
So, we, we could not have one, too, or is it requiring we do have one?
You don't have to.
Okay.
As long, as long as all the other recommendations are followed, the 10 recommendations, right? Okay.
Okay, at this time, I do have a motion with the changes in the recommendations. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll start with a roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehauser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
Bonnie Duffy, aye. Eric?
City Commissioners, that has passed on the county side. Do I have a motion and a second on the city side?
Mr. Chair, just clarifying, we're voting, or we're proposing a motion to amend item number nine on the condition list?
Uh, yes, I believe the passed motion was just to change the conditions and not the overall item itself. Am I understanding that correctly?
Number two was changed, along with number nine.
Uh, number two was changed to assign not to exceed two square feet, and number nine was chair, changed to state that guests shall have at least two dedicated off-street parking spaces.
I'll make a motion to that effect, Kurt Johnson.
I will second. This is Janet Kittum.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the city side?
This, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is John Paul. I just wanted a clarification with regards to the conditional use permit criteria, where it indicates that the primary use of the property will remain a single-family dwelling, and this can be a condition approval. And then there's also the reference to not allowing parties should be a condition of approval to limit concerns of noise and disturbances, and I just want to make sure those are represented, the, that are proposed for approving this.
Think, Kevin, would you maybe be best to talk to us on that?
All right, Kevin Hookman again. So... The, the parties' condition to not allow parties, it's difficult to determine what exactly is a party and what isn't, per se, and so, staff, as noted kind of in the staff report, decided that it's the seven guests, that it's not going to be a large group. You know, I don't think it would be fair for the staff to, or for us to make them say, go inside at 10 o'clock, or something to that, to say that after 10 o'clock is a party. It would be just difficult to enforce, and, and, you know, would, and if they want to be outside at 10 o'clock, and they're being okay, then that's fine, too, you know, that sort of thing. As far as the single-family dwelling, you may be correct in that the, these conditions don't specifically say that out, that a single-family dwelling is to be part of the conditions, so. If you wanted to add that, you can do that.
Anybody else have any further questions or discussion on that particular point?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Kurt Johnson here. Can you repeat that last piece, Kevin? We could add something in there, but it sounded like it was not going to be easy to enforce or possible to enforce.
So...
Clarify that, I'm sorry.
Uh, as far as the parties, I, I feel that saying, having a condition to specifically not allow parties at the house would be very difficult to enforce, because to define what a party is at the house, and say if it's inside or outside, or, so, it's the number of guests that really limits the parties, per se. As far as the house being operated as a single-family dwelling, that is not in the conditions as it is written. If you want to add that the bed and breakfast may, may operate only if the petitioner, while the petitioner lives on site, that could be a condition to keep it as a single-family dwelling as well.
Thank you for that. I just missed that last part about living on site, so, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions or comments from city Commissioners? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote on that motion. Commissioner Nissis?
Aye.
Commissioner Katie Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kurt Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Paulson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kittums?
Aye.
The motion has passed five to zero on the city side.
Thank you. It has been approved. You're free to go. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Move on to item number three. Conditional use permit, 20-46, to exceed 1,600 square feet of total accessory building area, requesting 2,400 square feet on the property legally described as Track 2, Hybert Greenhouse Edition, Southwest Quarter, Section 9, Township 101 North, Range 50 West. Petitioner is Cajun LLC, Jolene Malosky. Property owner's the same, 48642, 264th, 1.5 miles west of Sioux Falls. Kevin?
Yes. So, conditional use permit, 2046, is for a larger accessory building. It's located on a small parcel to the west of Sioux Falls. The petitioner is requesting to build 2,400 square feet of accessory building on the property that is detached.
The petitioner is requesting to build 2,400 square feet of accessory building on the property that is detached. The parcel is located at the end of a long, like, dead-end road, and near a large greenhouse. And I will note that this is also located in the floodplain, which has been, is part of the conditions of the project, that the construction to be compliant with the Minneah County's floodplain ordinance. If you read through the staff report, the city has a different floodplain ordinance than Minneah County does, and the city is requesting that the structure meet the county's, or the city's requirement to raise the structure or floodproof the structure to two feet above the floodplain, where the county only requires the structure to be floodproofed or raised at or above the floodplain. Other than that, the area is largely agricultural or even commercial-type nature, and a large building will not generally change the character of the neighborhood. And being that it's a accessory building, floodproofing should not be quite as difficult as being a, say, a single-family dwelling. So staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with nine conditions, and I am here for any questions.
Any questions for Kevin?
Could you just show some pictures, I guess?
Oh, yes. So this is the site plan here. It's going to be located in the back corner of the property, near another shed that's just off the property. A photo of the fence and the greenhouse in the background. And there's the house that is on the property. The neighborhood, as you can see, the long road is dead-ended. Behind me, to the west, there's the neighboring farmstead. And then there's the dead-end road. And then looking to the southeast, you can see dirt mounds for either mining, or gravel mining, or future development, or both. So, and that would be the photos of the area.
Any other questions? The petitioners here, will you please come forward and state your name and address?
Jolene Hebert Maslowski. My address is 26478 Brun Avenue, Sioux Falls, 57107.
Any questions for her? From the staff report, it's just for personal use, is that correct?
My parents are in their 80s, and they've never had a garage. They've always wanted a garage where they could just drive in, and it would be warm. And they can't access the upper level of the home or the lower anymore because of limited mobility. So they would like to have a flat surface where they would be able to, they hope to. My dad collects rocks. He wants to put his rocks on display there.
Any other further questions for her? Anyone else out there that care to comment on this item?
No hands are raised.
Okay, any further discussion on it? Commissioners?
Madam Chair, Adam Morehouser, I guess I make a motion to approve item number three with the recommendations from the staff.
This is Mike Ralston. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve conditional use permit 20-46. Any further questions, comments? On the county side, roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehouser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
Bonnie Duffy, aye. It is approved on the county side. Eric?
City Commissioners, we have a passed item on the county side. Do I have a motion and a second on the city side?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve with the staff cited conditions. Kurt Johnson?
Second, Braden Nissis.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion, city commissioners? Hearing none, we will call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Nissis?
Aye.
Commissioner Katie Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kurt Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Paulson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kidums?
Aye.
That item has passed five to zero on the city side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your item has been approved. You're free to go. Next item, number four, old business. Item number five, new business. I will approve, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
All right, Adam. Okay, I'll second that. Adam Morehouser?
Okay, motion made second to adjourn. I need to have a roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehouser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
On the county side, we have approved to adjourn. On the city side?
City Commissioners, we have a motion to adjourn on the county side. Do I have a motion and a second on the city side?
Adjourn, Kurt Johnson.
Second, Braden Nissis.
A motion and a second. We will also do a roll call vote. Commissioner Nissis?
Aye.
Commissioner Katie Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kurt Johnson? Commissioner Paulson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kidums?
Aye.
We are adjourned on the city side.
Thank you.